All right. Thanks, your patience. We were having some difficulties with the availability for the Zoom attendance to here. So I appreciate your patience while we got connected. All right, welcome. My name is Jeff Clark. I chair the Board of Finance. Other board finance members are all here tonight. Jim McPherson, Mike Malloy, Jeff Hekt, Chris Corcoran, Todd Zesson, Oliver Davis, and Todd Springer. They're all sitting over there. Tonight, we're going to go through, first, I'll present the Board of Finance portion of the material that will be followed by the General Government and followed by the Board of Education. Each segment will have an opportunity for questions before we pass on to the next one. If you're, there were copies of what's going to be displayed up here in your back, so if you're, they need that. I can't tell if there's very many left. So we are, we are at the annual budget hearing for the Towne East Grant for the January 25th. And next slide. So this is our calendar. Back in January, the boards presented Board of Finance on the high-level drivers. Now I can see it. In February, you know, we absorbed that as a Board of Finance. We looked at the grant list and we made directions in February, as you can see there, three and a half and five and a quarter. We asked the boards to come back with what those amounts of the increase would be. The boards came back with those numbers and also told us what they really thought they needed, 6.7 and 7.5. That was back in March. Next page, please. Last, about three weeks ago, on the third, we reviewed all that. We did review revenues and asked the boards to bring these numbers. You'll see tonight, we're concerned 4.5 and 4.8 for a hearing. We are in the blue line, which is the hearing. After this hearing, the Board of Financial will meet and make any adjustments, if necessary, to the materials that have been voted at the Town meeting. Town meeting will be on May 7th. And that will, in all likelihood, adjourn to a machine vote that will occur on the 21st. So it's possible that what is, because that might operate in my dip a little bit from time, depending on what the regulations can make. And next slide. Okay, so these are our sources of revenue. Property taxes, which is our, you know, property tax, house tax, commercial taxes. State grants for education, non-education as well. Interest fees, so, you know, interest on the general fund, building permits, the RCC, the dump fees, that kind of thing. And then we have a cash balance, how much, depending we use out of that. So the big story of revaluation, the good news that we are homeowners, we're home, it's most likely to work a lot more than it was a year or two ago. The bad news is the revaluation made our assessed values catch up with that. So we're all paying more tax. This, this time, it's significant. One of the sites coming up, we'll talk about that. But revaluation happens every five years. The one that happened in October of '23 is what it plans on next year's budget. And that's a market-based revaluation. The one on the next five-year terms, around the eight years that end in eight, is a inspection base for the town, or somebody looking out for their house, potentially wanting to come inside, that kind of thing. So residential real estate, by far, outgrew every other category of property. And I know you kind of get that picture here, but just by pure math, then these are the residential real estate categories normally. We think about 90% on average, 94% or something. Next page. Here's the graph. You can see where the blue line is the resident of real estate has always been the biggest thing, but it's like a little bit of a hockey stick up there. Went from 58% to 65% in one year. And you can see the other, all the other ones, you know, that's commercial real estate, industrial real estate, personal property, which is property that is on the board of the board of the general fund. Dip it down a little bit, hang around to about 10, 13% some property. Next page. Neck grant list decreased by $136 million, 21.2%. $134.7 million of that $136 was residential real estate. So the rest of real estate went up by $1.48. Motor vehicle went down, residential and personal property. I'm sorry, real estate, personal property. This includes other types of real estate. So this $134 is a subset of that. So big residential real estate is, by far, the biggest increase. So because of that, we want to do things to kind of litigate the taxi increase that's going to come. It's really unavoidable. So things like what we used to know rate, there's no reason to keep the known rate where it was. Couple other things we're going to do is take more money out of the cash balance, as an example. And as I said, it's 9.45, that's above the average. Maybe homeowners will see a tax increase higher, so maybe we'll see a lower tax above the average. Next page. So this first item, the motor vehicle known rate, we had intended to keep it flat at that 30.146. And we discovered since this was printed that we had a misunderstanding of the law and we actually have to keep it below. So one of the adjustments we'll make is to bring the motor vehicle tax rate down to whatever the probably known rate is. It was a little bit of monetary impact, about $150,000 left at the count for the board of finance meeting. We anticipate a 30.5 known rate, so you can see that's a big decrease, 15, almost 16%. Doesn't come close to offsetting the increase in value, though. So that, while we do that, it doesn't save anybody who pay more. And the blended known rate is going to be not 30.7 or maybe 30.5 or something like that. And we used to worry anticipates, because we don't actually set the known rate until after the budget vote is on. So that'll be after the machine vote on the 21st of May. That's when we set the known rate, so now we know exactly what we're funding. Everybody's motor vehicle tax, if you have the same vehicle, should go down, probably go down a little more than represented here, because they're going to lower that known rate. But the residential property, you know, even with the known rate decrease, there's still a big 40% increase happening. Next page. State grants, we've come, Connecticut has a biannual budget. So in the even year, it's just a, it's the second year of the biannual budget, it's pretty stable. So these, the governors' proposals, and those are, first of all, that's all we have. The second one was pretty stable till last year. Next year, we might see some more uncertainty, but they've been pretty good about coming in the mail dominoes on certain things early. That, the state grants, modest increase of about 5%, that's on a couple million bucks. And the payment going with taxes is flat, that's for Bradley Airport and the Kennedy Airport. Next page. I think I mentioned this, this is a kind of income from the town. I guess the good news on the interest on the general fund. Interest rates, as we know, are, you know, it's bad if you're borrowing, but it's good if you have a couple million bucks in the general fund. So the interest is higher, and we've incorporated most of that into our calculations. Next. Cash bal, excuse me, cash balance. Our policy is to maintain 10% of expenditures. We, you know, the best real-life example we have is tax bills are due on July 1st. As those taxes are coming in that first month, one month of a year is about 8, 8.5% of a year. So 8.5% kind of is the cash flow for one month. Not that we're right zero, but you could think of 8.5% representing one month and 10% representing a cushion should something happen. Our general fund balance is about 27, 28, 29, somewhere like that. So if you're wondering about 10% in 27 or 28, 20. We generally use pretty conservative revenue estimates, so sometimes we can have additional balance. If we have a conservative estimate, we got more revenue than we thought. We do try to, you know, it's a way out of whack. We do try to accommodate for that. And then, what was it, the board spend less, they return whatever was spent, goes back to the total. So currently, we anticipate around $900,000 from the cash balance, leaving 10.8. That's just a little more than the 10% we like. It's a lot compared to what we've done. In the last three years, we've drawn a billion one. We have it, but we're getting to the place where we probably don't have it in years ahead, in years coming to draw that kind of money. We had gotten our cash balance up for some borrowing a couple of years ago and didn't eat it off. So it's calling a good use by keeping taxes in mind. You'll recall in the last couple of years, tax increases have been exceptional. Last year, tax increases have been great, about in terms of, you know, known rate increase and that as part of the real life. Next slide. Okay, here's the table of revenues. So we're going to, it's a little bit of an eye chart, but you can see we budgeted $26.3 million in revenues for this year. We're expecting to come in $26.7. That's, the biggest driver of that is town fees and interest by about $330,000. Again, that's a big general fund balance collecting interest, so we baked that in. That's probably the reason why. So, you know, we expect to grow revenues by a lot of money bucks next year. Next year, we are, you can see, also, I'll just point out, staying on the town, on the interest line, we're going from 355 to 784. Then we're going to ratchet back for 24, 25. We're going to assume only about $409,000. So again, we, you know, we expect interest rates are going to come down at some point. They're not, I think that's the prudent thing to do, so we're not going to count on that 784 next year. Next slide, please. Eye chart, property taxes, 35.7%. Everything else, you know, state grants is about 9.6. Next slide. Expenditures match the budget for the whole year. We spent, I guess, the content debt repayment, it's in the middle, we spent about 1.5% less. That's just, that's what our amortization schedules for the three debts we have just cost us a little bit less next year. And you can see the board's head, general government, those percent, yes, and come back with. Capital reserve fund, we had planned, we were on a program to increase our annual funding for the capital reserve fund from $600,000 to $800,000. We went to $700,000 last year, we were going to go to $750,000 this year. We decided to pause that. We didn't need another, you know, $50,000 bucks to, you know, offset what otherwise might be back. And so, you know, when we go back to that next year, it may still be seen, but. So that's the expenditure today. Next slide, please. Or, you know, my other town, 72.8%, that'll be 20%. Debt, 4.3, we have those 2.5. That capital fund, by the way, it's like a savings account. We can't spend out of that unless we come to the town meetings. So, you know, the town meetings periodically throughout the year to get approval for at least for the required throughout, you know, the project this year. So those are, the money's put aside, but it's not spent until after the town meeting. Next slide, please. This is just a better show of the increment. All this other data's been on here, but, you know, 1% to 10% to 1.48 for the board of heads, 2.3% to 1.48, debt down, 18. And prior to your charges, we don't quite disclose. Next slide. Let's start with, we have three outstanding reading. That's my note that I almost broke the computer on. Elementary school project, that was a $7.2 million debt. Debt matures in 2027, there's a million, .06 left. Group and roads projects, that was issued in July for $9.9. Because of interest, we're still, we're sitting at 10.4 remaining. That goes out to 2041. And then the school LED light, that was $321K, there's $184K left in that for the public years. Those are our three debts. Next page. Well, I think I explained this to town savings account. I guess the only thing I didn't say is we do maintain a capital plan. We usually, right through the summer and fall, we set the new plan for the next year. But it's really a living document. Both boards keep it updated very closely. Next slide. So after we're done with this, you're going to hear from the General Government and the Board of Education, they'll have their own segments. So I guess I'll, before we go to one of those group of last, if there's any questions for me?
Yes, sir.
Sure. What interest rate are we earning on the general fund? What rate of interest are we earning on the general fund?
Does anybody know the general fund interest? I know it's conservative, it's not, it's a savings and money mark kind of rate, but I don't know exactly. I'll get that for the town meeting. Other questions?
I'm sorry. I just want to make a comment about the town I grew up in, which was Southfield, Connecticut. I know, just doing some quick research, Southfield has a lower bill rate than us by two points. They have included garbage pickup, they have included transfer station. A lot of the data looks close between the two towns. So I'm curious why such a steep raise on property taxes when we have to pay separately for garbage, we have to pay separately for transfer station. It seems like there's not a whole lot of included amenities that we get here compared to a very similar town like Southfield.
All right, I may have something for that, but that was common.
Southfield gets some revenue from the prison.
They do have three times the mass population.
Three times the population of prison.
Yeah, three, three times the population, but the percentage of kids in school is the same. The percentage of kids in school in Southfield per the population is roughly 5%, same as Grandby, or East Grandby. So if you look at percentages, yes, Southfield has a higher population, but East Grandby has a ton of businesses, international drive, we collect 25% of the airport taxes. Like I said, they're very similar towns on paper.
I think if you look at the numbers, you're going to find that Southfield gets a substantial amount of money from the prison. I think if you actually, I don't have the figure, but I've looked at it before. And it's a very large, it's a very large fixed figure for the prison. But I think that's one thing that they can count on that never changes, but other than that.
Other questions, comments?
I just, more or less had a question, I know you already highlighted it. It's the elephant in the room, but the reevaluation process, re-assessment. What's the lowest rate that's possible? I think you may have said it had to be at 30.5, but has been considered since we're going to get a surplus. Do you even decrease further below 30.5? Like, I'm willing to pay our fair share, but it just, it's a, it's a nice clip of money that we're going to have now. And everyone here is going to have to, you know.
Good question. So we haven't set the known rate, and, you know, there's six of us on the Board of Finance who will vote. I know one thing that I look at is that fund balance. We try to project for five years where it's going to be, knowing that, you know, year five or it's kind of, perhaps you, you know, you're just only assumptions. But I feel like the known rate we're at keeps us kind of dangerously close to the minimum that I'm comfortable with as one of six. Other questions? Fairly presumed.
Our interest rate is 5% on our general fund. And I'm checking.
Okay, let's go. All right, I'm going to turn it over to the General Government.
I'm going to just file along with this slide, that's fine. Hi, everyone, how are you? Yep, thanks, Eden. My name is Jay McMahon. I am the Finance Director in the Town of East Grandby. Eden and I are going to be presenting the Town Government budget tonight. We're happy that all of you turned out, that's great. So we look forward to sharing with you what we put together. Okay. All right, so the FY '25 budget, as presented, will do the following. It's going to fund all town operations other than schools. It's going to reflect the recent balance of the Board of Finance, which is 3.74% year-over-year FY '24 versus FY '25. It also reflects the reduction of one police officer, one part-time youth services coordinator, and a part-time seasonal physician in DPW. Those were, those were putbacks that we had to make. It factors in salary increases to eligible town employees effective July 1st. It transfers back approximately $80,000 from capital for fire department apparatus and equipment and required maintenance. Also, this is a change in FY '25, we centralized fuel into DPW. By that, I mean, we took the fuel budgets out of five departments and it's now centralized in DPW. So that's going to make it a lot easier as far as expensing the fuel, filling it back. We're not going to have to do that anymore. So we're pretty excited about that. It also reflects a decrease in the sure as employee benefits because several people are no longer receiving town benefits, offset by modest increases. Also, we had, in FY '24, we had budget money that was a little bit higher than needed. So if you factor in that, coupled with scrubbing the budget down, people no longer on, on health insurance, medical insurance, that caused us to kind of ramp down and be in a more favorable position. We charged back 50% to Board of Ed for SRO, police services, and town schools, which we instituted last year. It reflects a decrease in the RCC Recycle Collection Center, resulting in lower operating costs. We did put a new piece of machinery in the RCC this past year for recyclables. And what that means is we're hauling out of their list, so we're keeping our costs down. That, coupled with a new bulky waste program that we're going to be instituting on July 1st, which is a fee-based program, okay, which we're going to charge town residents based upon the type of vehicle you have to dump your bulky waste. What does that do? It helps offset that operating cost. So we're pretty excited about that as well. Also, it funds a new part-time custodian in town buildings, commencing on July 1st. Next, next we have, this is the lineup of FY '24 versus FY '25. It's a comparison as far as year-over-year percent by mine. And again, as I alluded to earlier, we're 3.73% year-over-year. And the drivers that I just indicated, you'll see the information fall out right here that I talked about, as far as the major drivers. Okay, talking about significant cost drivers in FY '25 budget. Public buildings line increased 35K or 18% again, due to the addition of a part-time custodian. That was formerly a full-time position. The fire department line, 1,700, we talked about that. That increased $90,000 based upon bringing capital back into the town budget. Plus the servicing fees, we had only budgeted $18,000 in FY '24. And working closely with Troy Wolf, okay, we very quickly realized that the budget wasn't enough, so we had to kick that up to about $46,000. We feel pretty good about that. The police line increased by approximately $89K for 12,000. The police line increased by approximately 89K or 12.6% due to a new contract that was instituted in FY '24. So we had increases there. An increase to our resident Connecticut State Trooper contract. That was approximately 35,000, offset by a decrease of one officer and related expenses, roughly 85,000. DPW line, 2,100, increased by approximately 83K or 9.8% due to the centralization of town fuel, approximately 33,000. Higher inflationary costs and a reorg in the DPW department resulting in the elimination of a part-time summer position. As I indicated earlier, the insurance line decreased approximately 126,000 and/or 14.3% due to several people that are no longer receiving town benefits, offset by a modest increase. Economic development, we had to make some tough cuts there, decreased by approximately 34,000 or 70% to offset increases in other lines. We talked about the RCC. The utility line, 3,900, increased by approximately 16,000 or 8.7% driven by increases in utility costs. As a matter of fact, we're in the process right now of finalizing a three-year agreement for electricity and sad to say that that went up significantly over the contract that we had previously by roughly 20%, I believe. Yeah. Mary and I worked on that together. Okay. This slide's rather interesting. What we did is we grabbed all the departments that are $100,000 or more. And what we did is we said, okay, let's add all those together and let's take a percentage as far as the total is concerned. As you can imagine, you see, it's the top of the pie chart. Public Works, 19%. Insurance is 16%. Police, 16, and so on and so forth. It's a nice view in terms of these are the bigger departments. The expenses are 100,000 or more and then a percentage of our overall total. Select operating data. Tax budget rate to March is approximately 98.34%. It's right up there with where it was in FY '24. Groundless increased by 21.2%. Our FY '24 budget is on target to meet the year-end goal of $5,434,915. Balance, we do a forecast every month. We look at our actual year-to-date expenses. We forecast out remaining spend. We work closely with our department heads to ensure we hit that number. Number of town employees equals 61, consisting of full-time, part-time, seasonal, and our Connecticut State Trooper. And process improvement. Last year at this time, we promised that we would take a look at how we pull the budget together, how we work with the department heads, how do we automate it? How do, how do we get to our numbers quickly in terms of summarizing the information? And having it ready for Board of Finance when we have our meetings, we're able to talk intelligently about all our data and all our lines. So we did revamp the process and it consists of new Excel workbooks, formula-driven budget summaries, queries, and data analysis, reconciliations, and reporting. So we delivered that as we said we would. Eden?
As always, our goal remains to make East Granby a better place to enjoy for all of us. So we're here for questions, comments. I don't think I'm going to have to give you the microphone or if you can come up, that would be better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. I was just wondering, we're reducing one policeman. So what went into that decision? Is it just purely dollars? Did you look at crime statistics or anything like that?
Essentially, we had to find $100,000 and that's unfortunately where we had to do it.
So we haven't looked at his crime spike and the other resources?
It's, it's not what we wanted to do.
Yeah.
So yeah, we do every, every Board of Selectman meeting every month. I do read the police logs, so you can see things are increasing. Right? All sorts of things are. Okay, for the police.
Just to follow up on what the gentleman just said, with seven police officers, and if you look out the window, we've got about eight or nine police cruisers out there. How many do we need?
So there's a couple cruisers over there that have to be jump-started every time they're used. So they're, they're used for road jobs usually, for private duty, police overtime road jobs. They have to, we've discussed this with Board of Finance and the Police Department, the cruisers cannot run at 100% capacity all day long, 24/7. So they do need a rest time, so they just can't all be used at one.
But you don't have seven out of the road every day, though?
Right.
You really only have four officers probably on duty throughout the day on cruise vessels, right?
Right. So the state troopers explained it to Board of Finance, how, how they, and to the Board of Selectmen, how they, I can, I can have our state trooper write a memo for you, but he's explained how it works.
It just seems odd, that's all. And if we're looking for money, you know, cruisers, you know, I don't know how much they cost, 60, 70 grand, right?
85.
Okay, 85? And that's the cost of what officer you just?
And we, we just sent a trooper to Academy and we didn't have a car for him, so we did purchase one from St. Mary's for $6,000 and outfitted it ourselves. Sorry.
But I'm just saying, that would be something to look at, I would say.
Thank you. Yep.
I have also a question about that same subject.
Let me just make sure everyone in here, okay? I'm not, I don't think they can hear. Yeah, you're going to have to lock and use the microphone.
Could you just repeat back there?
Let me just carry the microphone to the piece.
I just wanted to let you know, replacing a battery in a car that needs one.
They're just so old, it's not, it's like wiring and a whole bunch of stuff.
I don't, that's really, I'm in the automotive business and I, I don't really accept that answer.
Our Public Works does do the work on the cars, so.
Still.
I can get an answer.
If there's a safety issue, then we should get rid of that car. It's just the cost of a battery. That's a really bad excuse.
I'll get an answer from, from our mechanic.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. I'd like to talk to, you can't get it?
Sure.
I don't know anybody. Excuse me.
Yep.
I had to make some notes here, but I've got a stroke sometimes when we get excited, the words don't come out the way I wish they would. So please bear with me. And this is, I'm really kind of preaching to the choir here. I'm really, I guess what I'm saying is I'm venting, but I've lived in this town for 54 years in the same house. During the course of that time, I've never had any kids in school. I'm driving a 14-year-old vehicle, still runs good too. I'm 84 years old and I may only have a couple more years to live. And I have to think about moving because it costs so much to live here. My question to you is what's wrong with this picture? If I sell the house to somebody else, they're going to come in and come in marrying two or three kids with them and then the Board of Education's going to.
Amen. Amen.
So I guess my real statement is, and this is selfish from my point of view, I guess, but 54 years in the house, 84 years old, and hadn't had a stroke, and I'm thinking about, I have to find another state probably to live in because I can't, it gets hard to live here for what may be the last few years of my life.
We have a question. So the, the slide says, as always, our goal remains to make East Granby a better place to all, and there's a child in the picture, and we're cutting the youth services employee. Looking at youth services right now, it's the best I've seen it to live in this town. We are doing so much for our kids. It doesn't seem like it's the time to cut for our kids. I can address that. So we did have to look, the youth services position we're talking about was one that we had hired with ARPA-Fines, the COVID relief money. So unfortunately, that was the first place the Board of Finance asked us. And it made sense is that we had. I see what you're saying, but like. I, I understand. I feel you. We want to be here for the schools, for the town, for our kids. So it's not the place to cut, in my opinion. We bring everything we can to continue to origin for these issues.
I just have a question about the, the cut to economic development. Because I, I see, like, we might want to pay more money in taxes, but I want police officers, I want funding fire department, I want good youth services, I want, you know, an amazing school for this town because that's what brings the people to this town, is a school district. If we gut the school district, we gut the town, might as well just give it to the town, right? There is no town, right? And it's cost more money. It's, it's, you know, taxes probably should have been increased over the past couple of years, which is what's going to make this time hit so bad. But I mean, I feel like when you look at that, that last graph, the, one of the graphs that we had up on the Board of Finance, right, show real estate property as being this massive, you know, revenue gain for this town, right? We have, we don't have big business that generate big revenue. Is your economic development that lets bring business? And I'm not talking about a massive trucking depot that's going to put tons of trucks on the street. I'm talking about like real business that people in the town can use to make it a better town and generate revenue, right? I feel like if that's what that is, that should be the last thing we've got because that's like investing and bringing us more money, right? That's like putting money in the interest. Is, is that what that economic development is? And, and then I guess I would add to that, like, what is the, you know, Board of Select, what's the, the First Selectman doing to really try and drive, to bring more business into this town? I feel like if I was in that position, I would work day in, day out on trying to bring revenue to the town, right? Because we need revenue and, you know, I, I saw that, that that line at the bottom, right, was pretty stagnant over the past, what, since 2018? Which to me says, somebody is not doing the job to bring revenue to the town. And then the people have to really, you know, eat the cost in that. So I guess those are the two questions I have.
I think you could get an answer.
Yeah, let's get an answer.
Oh, I know.
So I'll give a little history lesson. One of the first things I did when I got into office was let our town planner go and hire a new one, where we've come miles and miles since. First couple of months in office, she did our affordable housing plan, which was overdue and it's a state statute. She did her accessory housing plan. She went through our zoning regulations. Many were illegal and outdated and unspectatory. So she did that. Then I started, so we paid our past planner $90,000. We paid this one 48,000 because she's a consultant. She also came on board for economic development. Our previous planner was slash economic development. We pay her $1,000 a month for economic development. She and I visit businesses in town deeply. We meet with them. We bring them to planning and zoning. The last, you'll probably remember a town meeting I had to try to add another member to planning and zoning, but meeting went sideways. And since then, we've had three tied votes for businesses coming in wanting to start and do something in town. There are tied votes, there are no votes. I'm trying. I ran for office to lower our taxes, to bring in more economic development, and I'm trying really hard, but planning and zoning meetings get shot down. And I guess maybe it's not enough people showing up to the meetings in support of it, but, so that money that you see coming out, I think it was 34,000? The 34,000 was the difference between what we're paying our current planner and the previous. That was a hard one for us to do. I did not want to do it and I'm finding, trying to figure out ways to get back in there. We do have $102,000 in our capital fund. So the grants, that's another thing. Our new town planner won us a lot of money in grants. She won 690,000 for the new sidewalks that are coming in. She won 3.2.875 million for our schools to redesign. So we need funds, we do need funds to make the conceptual plans and the construction plans for those two projects, which is why I've been trying to pad our capital budget at least for that. Otherwise, we would have come out of that now. So we do have $102,000 in our capital fund.
Thank you. You're welcome. Awesome. I'll come up there if I may. I'll come up there. Oh, okay.
Thank you all for showing up here tonight. My name's Jim Frankel in 2011. I've lived in town for 37 years. I've served, I've served on this panel on the Board of Education and the Board of Finance. Tax, I was going to go into the end to speak, but after hearing some of the comments, I felt I needed to get up here now. The taxpayers cannot tolerate an average 14% increase in their taxes. It's unfair to the, to the families that are struggling, small families that are struggling. It's also unfair to our seniors. If you, a full one-third of our adult population buries six years and older, probably living a fixed income. There are only three things we can do. We can increase taxes, reduce budgets, or expand the tax base. I'll get to that a little bit later. The person, the, the personnel. It's hanging on. The personnel cuts you've seen and are likely the result of funds expiring, COVID, ARPA, and that's their funds. They have expired. The people that were hired, the people that were hired. I'll, no. The people that were hired.
You can hear it.
I can yell. The people that were hired with those funds should have been told that their jobs would expire, would, would end when that ARPA money expired. Plain and simple. For those who came to East Granby for a better school system, didn't do their homework.
That's right.
Southfield and especially Granby get far better economic achievement for about $4,000 left per student. For the previous, for the previous about 10 years discounting this one. If you look at the groundless, which is the, the total sum of all property, taxable property in the state or in the town. If you discount the one-year aberration in motor vehicle assessments, it's increased by less than 1% per year. Any increase in budgets over 1% means an increase in your taxes, plain and simple. Which brings me to planning and zoning. There's a parcel of land in town that was zoned for three, 400 square foot warehouses. The planning and zoning refused, a budget changed for one 800,000 square foot. Do a simple arithmetic with me. 1.2 million approved, 800,000 square foot decline. That alone would have brought in $2 million in revenue and would have, would have decreased the tax increase you're going to see from 14, 15% down to single digits. Let me commend our First Lot Woman, E. She commissioned a village better site, which attempted, which is going to revitalize our town center, bring in businesses, and reduce our tax base, or increase our tax base. And it was intended to maintain our rural and historical character. She's acquired, as she, as she mentioned earlier, several million dollars in infrastructure grants from the state of Connecticut to make this happen. We must look to the study for guidance. We must look to the study for guidance and proceed with this completion. Finally, I have to say this, for those that refuse any businesses go in town, they should stay in their seats, remain silent, and politely pay their taxes. Thank you. Good for you.
No warehouse.
Another question?
Off the mic.
On the $33,000 that you're moving into DPW for fuel savings, what departments are those, are those funds coming out of and how much per department? Because it doesn't really show on this sheet where you're saving that money.
It's a good question. Roughly fortified departments and, oh, I'm sorry. The total coming out was approximately $34,000. It would have come out of building inspector, it would have come out of police, it would have come out of fire, and it would have come out of senior center, the minibus. So we removed those budgets, reduced those lines, and took that amount and added it to DPW for all the town fuelers' house right now, including Board of Ed.
Right, but all those other departments went up. So it's kind of like a fake number because you still left, that money is still in there and you're only increasing it from what you've added to it from last year.
Yeah, it's merely a budget transfer, okay? It's transferring it out of certain lines into DPW. It's not a save, but it is an efficiency save because we don't have to do as much work in the various lines, okay, as far as invoicing, as far as payments, as far as reconciliation. So it's really what I call a soft budget save. It's not hard dollars, we're just moving them around in order to be more efficient in the town. And to give that Hubbard a little leeway as far as, you know, his admin staff and not having the amount of work that was normally done prior, that's all.
I think what you're asking, so say the building department line, you took $5,000 out and put it into DPW, why did their school have $5,000?
Right, it's the numbers look...
So why are the lines going up?
Well, because there's net, there's increases and decreases. Okay, so if you see a line going down by 5,000, there could be other increases as well, okay? So the net effect isn't going to be a reduction, in fact, it could be an increase.
Right, it's just not very transparent here. You're saying you're taking money out, but you're not showing what that money is being used for that's not actually being taken.
And I can explain why, because the amount of money coming out of the lines is not a significant amount. So it's not going to swing those lines. So if you have a $70,000 budget, you're moving 5,000 out, and then you have other fixed costs you have to fund, you're not going to, you're not going to see that. It's just efficiency, that's all. And you're going to see a bump, though, in DPW because they're taking on 30-plus thousand more budget. But that was just merely a transfer. But I understand your question, it's a good one.
Hi. Bob Ravenseeger, 83, New Gate Road. And I'm not here to complain about my taxes or whine about them or anything like that. I will cheerfully pay my taxes, but I'm not going to sit quietly in my seat. If you want to preserve the historic and rural character of this town, you don't put an 800,000 square foot monstrosity. Thank you very much.
Way before I got here, that zoning allows for it. It's been allowed for it, previous planner.
It's not allowed for 800,000 square feet?
It does not.
It's by special permit, right?
So it's not allowed?
It does not.
By special permit.
It is not allowed unless it gets approved by a special permit. So it is not allowed, just to be clear.
Anyone else?
I think one of the biggest problems a lot of people are having is this is the largest increase. This town has never seen this much generated in real estate taxes. So why are we still struggling figuring out whether we're cutting a police officer or a school safety officer or counselor? These numbers have never been this big, so where are the discrepancies that we can't make this work?
Inflation.
I think, you know, even when you ran the first time, you ran on lowering taxes and reducing the dump fees and all of that, which we all know is you can't increase services and lower taxes, it just doesn't work that way. So I think when you ran the second time, and we're now finding ourselves in this position, I don't think that the issue is that you've been kind of stalled in looking at, I think you're looking at the wrong things to bring to this town.
Well, I can't say when I got into office, I realized we have a million-dollar deficit for MTC because our bills weren't paid. There's a lot of things that I'm uncovering that I have to pivot for.
Yes.
And I talk about them freely in my Board of Select meetings, in my WBC meetings. And yeah, I think now we're in a position where our tax collector just left. I mean, for years and years, the Board of Finance had the Board of Selectmen do salary studies of Basra, a town the size of ours, an hour away. But we just lost our tax collector, a sinister, for $40,000 more. We have no tax collector right now. She's covering one day a week until I can find money to hire someone. Sinister is paying 90 for their assistant, and we were paying our tax collector 68.5. So that's the stuff I'm running into.
It's going to happen everywhere. I mean, you compare us to Sinister.
Yeah. It's Sunfield, it's Grandy, it's Windsor, it's Wombell, it's everyone surrounding us.
But I don't, I mean, the question I'm hearing is, if this is the largest revenue we've ever generated from our property, why are we still having such a huge gap? There's this, I think, an issue with numbers and transparency, I think, that people are questioning. If we're going up, you're looking at 14%, 9%. Where, why are we still cutting police officers and looking at, you know, we're doubling the Board of Select budget, but we're coming in at 5% is what they're begging for from Board of Ed. So I think what people are looking at.
Yeah, sure. So the Board of Finance, they give us a budget percentage to work with every year. So it's our job...
It was 3. something initially, yeah.
It's roughly, I think it was four...
We're not doubling, it's still at 3.73.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was what we initially came in at, saying we needed a police officer, but we cut it down to 3.73, which they have. So it's not at 6.0. That was the initial presentation.
Yeah. So anyway, we get a percentage every year from Board of Finance. It's voted on, and it's our job to take good care of that budget money, which we do every single month, okay? We forecast where we're going to end the year, we look at various ways that we're going to drive savings into the budget. And we've done that, and we've been successful. We can only do what we're given, okay? This was roughly $200,000 year over year. Plus, you've got new requirements that are going to be kicking in too. So unfortunately, you've got to make some difficult cuts. You've got to look at your requirements, you have to look at your core services, step back and say, okay, is the safety of the town well-covered in this budget? And if the answer's yes, then what you need to do is you need to look at your other lines and say, okay, we've got some tough decisions to make. This is not easy. Okay, we labor over this, and we do the best job we can in making these decisions and taking care of the budget money that's afforded to us each and every year. That's probably not the answer you want, but...
You understand now that we're only at 3.73, though, right?
But that's what I'm saying, but we're taking, in order to get to that point, we're cutting a police officer, we're looking at cuts for Board of Ed, we're cutting...
Well, we're cutting, I can explain, the police officer. So we are at, yes, we're at the highest number of police officers we've had. We, when I first ran for office, I sat and interviewed two police officers right after the election. Jim was still First Selectman, and he, we hired one out of those two. And then there was a time that we were ready to fill the second position, so the second interview, we came on board. Another history lesson, six years ago, a police officer was let go unjustly because of a million-dollar court case against the town. And I hired him back because it was the right thing to do. It was the right thing to do. And he's back, or we would have been facing another lawsuit. He's back now, and I have a tough decision to make of, I mean, I'm working with the police union now, there's agreements of who has seniority, who doesn't have seniority, so one officer is going to have to go. That's $700,000, unfortunately.
All right, I've lived here for four years now. In those four years, my property taxes have gone up, excuse me, $1,600. If this proposal goes through, they're going to go up an additional $600. That's $2,100 in four years. I don't know about everybody else, I only get about 2% raise a year. So we've got government looking for 3.78%. We've got Board of Education looking for 6%. I mean, I don't grow money on trees, so this is getting ridiculous. It's just, it's a lot of money for your common, blue-collar town resident to have to deal with. And it's getting tough, you know, not to cry about it, but I'm being serious, and I think I speak for a lot of people with that. We don't make huge amounts of money yearly as raises. So when you have to start thinking about the possibility of moving to a different town, it gets sad, it really does, when you've come to like where you're currently living. It's crazy.
So I just have a quick question to the Board of Finance, to Oliver, Jeff, Mike, and company. So the question is, what's our bond rating? What will it drop to if we were to come off the 10.8% fund balance and come in at like a 7.3% fund balance, which would enable us to have an effective tax increase in the 2% to 3% range? What would that do to our bond rating? I know policy-wise, as long as I've lived in town, there's always been that 10%. I'm familiar with the Board of Finance, I've been, you know, involved with it, as you're all aware. But the question is, is this the time to use some portion of the fund balance to offset the...
The answer is no.
3-point whatever that Eden's looking for and the 6 or whatever that the Board of Ed's looking for? Is this the time to do it, John?
No.
So we have been down the cash balance over the last couple of years, and we're...
Hang on one second, Oliver, you need the microphone.
The slide I'm referring to showed that 10.8% fund balance. And Jeff was pretty clear to us that that's the policy. So the question is, what effect would it have on our bond rating to dip down below that 10.8?
It's a good question. So we've done some research at what adjacent towns have done, and throughout the state of Connecticut, it could not be more varied. Some states have 39% put aside, others have less than 1/10 of 1%. So it's really a town-by-town decision. When you look at what we currently are projecting over the next couple of years, we're at the 10.8 now. And I know we've tweaked the model to make it as efficient as possible to remove the tax burden, but we're already projecting to go down to, I think, about 9% next year, and that's 7.7% the year after that. So with those outlying years, we're going to have been drawing down our cash balance for seven years in a row, because we've been spending more money than we've been bringing in. As for the specifics of what it would change our bond rating from and to, I mean, I don't know, we wouldn't know that.
Is that our biggest concern in having 10%? Is that the biggest concern?
I know it is. It is good to have financial responsibility and have a reserve put aside, but one of the reasons we got it up high before was when we were going out to get the bond for roofs and roads, it was to make sure that we were viewed as a financially responsible town. And to know one of the school roof is going to be replaced, so I would be really concerned about drawing down the cash balance too low and what the impact would be on that, because I don't want to waste money on interest, because I think we can all agree that's not helping anyone if we're spending the money on...
But there is a direct correlation between 1%, 2% versus direct revenue levying increase, 1%, 2%, correct? We use 2% of our fund balance, it's going to reflect a 2% reduction in the proposed taxes, correct?
Yes.
It's revenue against expenditure. So if we drop down below 10, but to a quote-unquote prudent level, is that a possibility that the town might consider?
We have considered, and we have been putting together the model. We can certainly have more of that discussion tonight. But yeah, I would be concerned more about the ongoing trend of over, including the next forecasted out two years, seven years now in a row, we've spent more than we brought in, and we're drawing down that balance, and that is not a sustainable path. And that's what gives me pause. I hope that helps.
No, that's great. Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bob Pastwitz, I'm Chair of the Board of Education. I'd like to, excuse me, thank you for coming out tonight. It's been a tough year for the Board of Finance, Board of Education. We're all residents of East Granby, we all pay taxes, and certainly the Board of Education has been very cognizant of what impact our budget has on the tax base in town. It's been many hours and many days we've spent on this, and tonight our superintendent will be giving a presentation of what it would be for us to meet the Board of Finance's request of 5.48%. The Board of Education has been working their workshops at a number of 6.38%. We were at 6.83% a couple of weeks ago. We've been able to get that down. One thing about education is it changes from day to day. We get people retired, we get people that are out, people come in, we have needs of students that can change by $100,000 on students, by federal law. And our superintendent and our staff does an excellent job of trying to maintain all that. It's a delicate balance. I've been on the Board of Education for 12 years, I've lived in town for 40 years, and this is probably the most difficult time, and we're glad people came out tonight, because you're going to make the decision. Again, the Board of Education is not endorsing the presentation being made tonight by the superintendent. One of our prime purposes is to provide for student achievement. Every decision we make, I suppose I ask myself, how does that enhance student achievement? And a 5.48% budget increase doesn't do that for us. And I'd say the Board of Education, nine members of the Board of Education, the one thing we have been, has been very consistent with each other and very agreeable with each other with all decisions we've made up till now. We've gone to the Board of Finance, they've listened to us with open ears, they're taxpayers too, and they're concerned. But we're the messenger tonight. We're bringing you the package of what it's going to cost to be able to do what we need to do. When you cut staff and cut people, it's not always easy to go out and replace them for certain subjects that they may be teaching. So when we say, well, we'll cut 0.2 tenths of a position, that could be a whole person. And if we look at the news today in education, it's tough getting educators to come into work in schools, especially with starting salaries about $50,000 after they spend tens of thousands of dollars or hundreds to get an education. It's difficult. It's a delicate balance, and we're glad you're here tonight in the Board of Education. I've received letters today endorsing more money for the Board of Education, for our budget, and the Board of Education is certainly willing to listen. We'd like to do, we'd like to do that, but we do represent the community, and we're here tonight to hear what you have to say. Superintendent do her presentation. And again, in the 40 years I've lived here, we have an amazing school system. It's something we're all proud of, and I never thought in my life I'd be complaining about the value of my home. And I never thought in my life I'd be complaining about the value of my home so much.
It's your right what they said.
And one of the reasons, and we've heard it tonight, is the school system. And, and that is the reason. And I am a senior citizen. And I don't have another town to move to, because no one can tell me where it is going to be cheaper for me to buy a house and live on a fixed income. This is what we're living with, and one of the main reasons of the board members, whether it's the Board of Finance, a Board of Ed, we're here because we are concerned about all those issues. We are concerned about student achievements and our values of our properties in town. So tonight, I made the presentation. It's again, we are only presenters, we're showing you what's been going on. We've been able to get through COVID, which is very difficult. And actually, East Grandy was one of the first school systems in the state to reopen for everyone to come in. The one thing we haven't been able to get through is over 8.5% inflation rate a couple of years ago. There was a lot of federal money that helped us. Those are tax dollars. And again, we pay federal tax dollars, and those tax dollars came back to pounds and schools throughout the country. And everyone today is, now have to make up for it, because those dollars are gone. But our education hasn't disappeared. And, and we are a business of people. Education is people. We have contracts, we have legal documents. 70%, over 70% of our town budget's education. That's like that in every community. That's just unfortunately the way it is. But I'd rather pay for education than pay for ignorance. When I look at what we have with crime and what we spend on prisons, it's, in the long run, it's cheaper for us to educate kids so we don't have to pay for living in prison for decades and decades. And if you look at what Connecticut spends on that now, it's a, it's a big number. But we had a presentation, I don't want to tell you anymore. Ms. Povaral is going to do the presentation. This presentation is also on our website. We gave it to the Board of Finance a couple of weeks ago. We gave the information to Talk Turkey. And I'm glad no one's asked me why we don't have printed copies in the back, because we've already cut our paper budget from previous issues. So we are using technology, it's available, it's very transparent, it's out there. But I don't think anyone wants us to present, I think, the 100 copies of color, and then throw them away at the end of the night. So really, that's one area where we've cut back already, but it certainly is out there. So with that all said, let's see. Ms. Povaral is our superintendent. She came in actually during COVID. She's been an employee here in East Grandy as a principal for almost 20 years. And we were very lucky during COVID. It was a very, very difficult time. It was nice to have somebody come into the system who knew the system. And we've been able to maintain the quality of our program. I think just this week, I saw, yeah, in the state of Connecticut, our school system was just ranked right up there at the top. And that's where we want us to, I want to turn it over, let's see if we can.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. As Chairperson Pastewitz said, my name is Ms. Povaral Randy. I'm the proud superintendent of East Grandy Public Schools, completing my eighth year in this wonderful town. Clearly, I'm not a popular person tonight. I do stand up here with the superintendent's proposal. What I would request is that you keep an open mind and listen. In the end, the community is the one that votes. And as Ms. Pastewitz said, that's where the decision is made. I will have no choice but to meet that decision. But it is my responsibility as your superintendent to present what is necessary to keep our schools strong and keep them as a motivation factor for our families in district or for those in barging the pot that I don't need these or I do. Okay, this slide reflects the projected enrollment numbers as reported by NESDEC. NESDEC is the New England School Development Council, who every year does our projected enrollment. The numbers that we provide to NESDEC are the same enrollment numbers that are entered into our state system, which is referred to as PSIS. That's our data system. And that occurs on October 1st of every year. Projected enrollment does not include students in our pre-K program or those who attend a full-time magnet program, private school, parochial school, homeschooled, or an alternative education program through an individualized education plan. For reference, we average between 30 and 33 pre-kindergarten students each year. These numbers also do not include any new building permits issued after this report has been generated. As you can see by this visual, East Grandy is not expected to witness any significant student decline or incline over the next decade based on current data for enrollment. We will remain stable. Many districts across the state and the country are diminishing with their overall student population. In East Grandy, we are expected to remain exactly where we are with some fluctuations up and down, again, based on current building permits and current student data. For the last several years, we have had 21 sections for kindergarten through grade five. During the 2021 school year, this was during the COVID time, we did have more children that stayed at home through some of our virtual learning and who were homeschooled. So for that school year, we did go down to 20 sections. Next year, we will be looking at the impact of reducing one section at Algro School. By way of example, this chart shows that reduction in grade two. Regardless of the grade that classroom deduction takes place, that particular grade will be on the cusp of class size guidelines with our current enrollment numbers. This slide simply shows the current school operating budget of $19,142. And the guidance from the Board of Finance for next school year of $20,191,000. The net change represents a 5.48% over current operating budget. This is an important slide, because this is the work that takes place in order to get to whatever percentage that we are looking at. A plus-one budget is taking all of our current resources, programs, and staffing, and moving over one year, inclusive of contractual obligations and estimated inflation. By doing so, the Board of Ed percent of change is 10.42%. This is not what we have ever requested. This is the starting point, keeping all programming and staffing in place. This percentage is largely attributed to our certified staffing line. We can no longer maintain the number of staff salaries that have been moved into our grants over the past several years. This year, we shifted about $200,000 out of grants back into our operating budget to support staff salaries. This was a known expectation shared during the budget process for the past few years, and it is panning out as anticipated. You can go back, I'm sorry, David, I'm still on the other one. After meeting with the administrative team and through several Board of Education workshops, I, as the superintendent of East Grandy Schools, respectfully recommend a 6.38% budget increase for the least negative impact to students and their opportunities. This still requires a reduction of five certified teachers and one non-certified staff member. To meet a 5.48% increase, the additional impact would be a further reduction of $173,000, both in staffing and programs or extracurricular activities. With all of these modifications, we will meet a 5.48% increase over the 23, 24 school year. Budget drivers are very consistent from year to year. Education is person-driven, and therefore, our largest driver is human talent and capital, which includes both salaries and benefits. To meet a 5.48 overall budget increase, the contractual obligations for certified staff to the operational budget is approximately $326,187. As a note, this line does not reflect the cumulative allocation of salaries and the amount of $1.1 million that are still charged to grants. For your comparison, last year, the net change in this particular line was approximately $164,000, because we moved additional salaries into grants. So for this current year, we have about $1.3 million in salaries in our grants. Certified, oop, laughing. Thanks, David. Non-certified staff consists of a pair of professionals, administrative assistants, custodians, and other support personnel. And this is a budget increase just over $61,000. We have budgeted 10% increase for healthcare benefits. Student support services relates to areas such as board certified behavioral analysis. You may hear them as referred to as PCVAs. Clinical assessments, hearing impaired resources, occupational and physical therapy. Student support services encompass many areas for our children, including special education, children with 504 plans, homebound tutoring, and specialized transportation, just to name a few. This line changes constantly when new needs for students are identified. Tuition and funding for students require an alternative educational programs, and those attending public schools of choice reflect an increase of over $40,000. Further budget drivers are fuel and utilities. Subscriptions, textbooks, and supplies have a total increase of $67,000. This increase actually represents a $30,000 decrease that we took across the board. Drivers include a new elementary math and reading program, also adding new software security subscriptions and allowing for inflation. Transportation is reflecting a projected decrease of just under $11,000, as we plan to revise our bus routes from seven routes to six. And the balance of $90,000 is reflective of all other lines within the operating budget. This includes field trips, maintenance, payroll taxes, unemployment, professional development equipment, printing, and substitute teachers. A district cost that's not noted in this slide is 50% share of this school resource officer. And we plan to allocate the remaining SIR funds to that cost. Okay. Oh, thank you. This slide looks different than it has for the past many years. We have always been able to start with verbs such as maintain with an occasional enhance. This year, we are beginning with reduction. A 5.48% budget will have an impact. It will, it will reduce staffing by $625,000 for approximately seven certified and two non-certified staff. It will gain impact to comprehensive programming and elective opportunities for our students. We will revise our bus routes and reduce seven routes to six. We will be on the cusp of Board of Education class size guidelines for one or more of our elementary classrooms. This budget supports all of our contractual obligations, a new required elementary reading program, and takes into account a 10% increase for group health insurance, which we are still negotiating. The budget reflects increases of 5% in workman's compensation and other business insurances, and adjustments for utilities, maintenance, and fuel. Again, we will support the 50% for the school resource officer. And this, this does not include the $1.1 million that we will continue to keep in our grants, such as Open Choice, IDEA, which is a special education grant, and state title grants. The operating budget lines that support student support services are dynamic as the district continuously assesses student needs. We budget for known student needs, and this budget area fluctuates greatly based on needs as children are identified with needs or exited from particular accommodations. We also have changes to mid-year health benefits and unexpected building, maintenance, and repairs that are always areas of impact. Additionally, we are facing space limits, particularly at Algro Elementary School and at the middle school, where all of our teaching in any possible office space is occupied. Maintaining athletic fields is another area with potential significant budget impact from the future. Anticipated revenue to the town. Education, education cost sharing is the state's contribution to our educational program. These funds go directly to the town. Town wealth is determined and calculated based on the town's property tax base and the income of its residents. The excess cost grants, which is the, the second grant on this slide, are federal funds provided by the state to school districts to assist them in paying for special education expenses for students with extraordinary needs. This number is only an estimate, and the actuals are realized during the school year as student needs are met. Billable special education services are for services rendered in East Grandy to tuition students. The number is an estimate and entirely dependent on the roster of students that enroll in East Grandy Public Schools each year. Pay to participate helps to offset some extracurricular program costs. Annually, we receive between $15,000 and $20,000 in pay-to-participate fees. Those fees are paid by the families for their students to participate in primarily athletics at the high school. The balance of previous Open Choice tuition grant, which is funding we receive from our students who join us from Hartford, is at approximately $150,000. The expected tuition for next school year is approximately $300,000. Again, this is depending on number of students that enroll. If we do not increase or maintain our Open Choice participation, then we will see less tuition payment. The Choice Academic Social and Support Grant is also awarded based on enrollment. These funds support after-school and during-school academic interventions and social events. Title grants are state grants and have specific criteria for use. Positions that support student academic achievement and professional learning are two very common areas that these grants are designated for. Some title grants have been reduced in recent years by state calculations. Sometimes it's, it's misunderstood that we can use grant money for whatever we want. That is not the case. There are many grants that give us very strict parameters that we need to actually apply and be approved from, from the state. SIR III, or ARP, will be utilized to support the board's share of the school resource officer. The IDEA grant, which is Individuals with Disabilities Act, is specifically for special education salaries and support. It is anticipated that school mill reimbursement through our State Department of Education will bring in about $7,000 next year. Our staff works diligently to locate and apply for additional grant funding to relieve either the Board of Education operating or capital expenses. Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning grant was awarded to East Grandy in 2023 for eligible reimbursements not to exceed $356,000. So this was an item, for example, we knew we had to upgrade. So we had planned for it in capital. We were able to apply and receive the grant, which will reimburse the town. In the end, of course, saving the town. And I believe we're at a 46% reimbursement rate is what, is what East Grandy gets from the state. Peg Petia supported the purchase and upgrades of our view boards, which you might know the more common device is called the smart board. These were items on our capital plan as well, and we were able to purchase for the last three to four years without those capital fund requests. The connectivity grant funded the purchase of all of our Chromebooks, iPads, and software for the last few years. The Connecticut State Turn of Education School Safety Grant is a matching grant being applied to safety measures and equipment of items on our capital plan. Again, we had planned for replacement of exterior doors over two years. That funding will be used in combination with this grant, again, giving back the town 46% reimbursement of the funds that we had already planned for. CIAC, which is an athletic, the athletic company, organization, thank you, in Connecticut. This is, we were awarded a grant This is, we were awarded a grant for sports supplies and equipment. ARP SIR, Small Town Right to Read, provides funding for a required K3 reading program. So we use this to purchase books and PD to support a reading program. And we are currently awaiting another $20,000 to purchase additional view boards per classrooms. This slide represents the estimated cost avoidance for fiscal year '24, that's our current school year, in one of our recently expanded students and work programs. We are a growing young community. An example of one in-district program expansion under student support services and designed to meet individualized needs is accommodating 10 children in their home school. When we compare same services, we provide an in-house program for those children at an estimated cost of $800,000, as opposed to a tuition program that would total approximately $2 million. This slide represents collaborative services. We are able to save on the above areas due to our collaboration with other towns, our town, and other school districts. You can see the range from utility costs to transportation, office leases, and professional learning. These next two slides show the reductions needed for a 6.88 increase, which is my recommendation, as well as a 5.48% increase, the guidance provided by the Board of Finance. The fourth line down on the right, where you see the 10.42%, that is the starting point for the plus one that I talked about earlier in the presentations. Reading down on the left side, you will see reductions that include a healthcare line. We were able to negotiate a better rate since our initial workshops back in October. Also, a reduction of five certified staff, one non-certified staff, revised bus runs. We will decrease our professional development line and middle school activities. We are not looking to eliminate any program. We will just be reducing. We will also shift some activities in one of our grants so that we can provide that money towards a salary. We also will take a reduction to supplies, books, and subscriptions. This is where we land for a 6.38%. Further reductions would include approximately $163,000 in staffing, which is about two to three more staff members, and reductions to athletics or extracurricular areas to meet the 5.48%. Over the last two days, seven teachers did receive non-annual notices across all of our grades K through 12, in anticipation. This slide shows the Board of Education proposed budget, the Board of Finance guidance increase, and the final approved percentage increase, and the funds returned to the town for the past eight years. We have also set aside, and we thank the town for allowing us to do this, funding into a non-lapsing account for years 2019, 20, and '23. This funding has been utilized for emergency building maintenance, tennis court upgrades, and baseball and softball field repairs. The East Granby Public School Administration and Board of Education have been good stewards of the community, funding for education averaging 2.58% over the past eight years. Additionally, we have returned over $700,000 in unexpended funds and sought grants to reduce the ask of operating and capital funds. The compounded effect of using grants to relieve the operating budget to keep our percentage increase low year after year has reached its saturation point. We have educated and cautioned about this inevitable result, and we are now faced with it. A 6.38% budget is my recommendation that will have the least negative impact to students and their opportunities in East Granby. We are all so very proud of our efforts to sustain a fiscally responsible, comprehensive school program. But even more importantly, we are proud of our school district and the families that we serve. Our students graduate with an education and experiences that prepare them for their next phase of young adulthood, college, career, or service. We are committed to how our East Granby students grow, learn, and thrive in a rich school environment. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Yep. Thank you. Good evening. Tim Phalen, Southern Washington Ridge. I did prepare a statement. Try to keep it under the three minutes that we traditionally had as our town rules. I apologize if I go a little bit over. Been a proud employee of East Granby Public Schools since the fall of 2004. As an employee, I've been a science teacher, coach, high school assistant principal, East Granby Public Schools transportation coordinator, and now a current role of East Granby Middle School principal. I've been so proud to work in the school district that my wife and I moved here with our three sons, who are currently aged 18, 17, and 12, to live here in 2019, which now also makes me a proud parent in the school community. In essence, I'm a walking advertisement of how amazing this district is and has been. And I've represented pretty much every possible constituency in this town other than elected a bishop for the past two decades. Not on my bucket list, for the record. I cherish this decision, moving here is one of the best decisions that my wife and I have ever made for our family. And working in this district, believe me, I'm living the work. I am the homework. I'm doing it. Having seen my oldest son Liam's tuition estimate literally two days ago for one of his top two school choices in the fall as a rising college student, admittedly reacting with Rajan rabbit eyeballs, like, whoa. I'd be remiss if I didn't also state that he ordered that I'm also a taxpayer that intimately knows the value of the dollar, especially at this time of my life as a rising college dad. I get the fact that taxes will go up as well as anybody in this town, but I also appreciate the solid investment in our schools those tax dollars provide to better ensure that our children, including my sons and my students, have access to the best education possible. I know my 18-year-old is as much more competitive as a college and scholarship applicant thanks to the path provided to him by our district here, by comparison to the one that we left in Massachusetts. That all said, I urge the Board of Education, the Board of Finance, and the citizens of East Granby to move Superintendent Hart Randy's recommended budget increase through, which as of a few minutes ago, but then introduced at last night's Board of Ed meeting, at 6.38%. At present, the increase from 5 and a quarter to the initial number given to the Board of Ed by Board of Finance of 5.48 would add to approximately $40,000 total. Easy math divided, $40,000 equally amongst the roughly 5,000 citizens of East Granby averages to about $8 per person per year, or roughly 67 cents per person per month. By going 6.38 from 5 and a quarter, or 1.13% increase if my math is good. And I am a math nerd, data nerd, those who know me well. The increase would be about $3.27 per person per month using the same math. And I don't want to dismiss the burden that we have on this community, but that's one less dunk and run per month for a male and five and 12-year-old Blue Mini Van. We call it Blue Steel. We have to consider the potential consequences in schools if we don't put a 6.38 forward, as outlined and echoed by Mr. Pasquist, Chairman, and thank you for your comments, sir. Non-renewal of teachers based on department enrollment and teacher certifications and experience based on hiring dates will occur. And it's hard for me not to take set cutting positions personally, but as a principal, I led interview teams that hired five absolute rock stars to join our already amazing faculty just at East Granby Middle School. They were hired from a relatively shallow sea of teacher talent, thanks to a national teacher shortage. I know these are difficult times and difficult decisions to make, but this is a time where we should be keeping teachers and not cutting them. We may also have to cut programs that enrich and diversify our East Granby Public School student experience, perhaps even cut support for students, perhaps need intervention identified through the SRBI process. Making any or all of these moves does damage to the quality of our education program for students here in East Granby Public Schools. Lastly, considering, as was outlined on that last table, that our district has returned literally hundreds of thousands of dollars back to town over the past 20 years, since I am both citizen and employee, and also considering that we as a community have been informed of this fiscal cliff that's been building over the past few years, as a dad and as a taxpayer, I think it's now time that we do the right thing in the spirit of the best thing in our schools. Pass the 6.38, support our students, save the programs, save the jobs, and continue to make East Granby Public Schools one of the best districts in the state of Connecticut, backed by data, when we were ranked number one in our DIRD, number five overall in the state with our science scores at East Granby Middle School. I'd be remiss if I didn't know. Board of Ed, Board of Finance, and Town citizens, I wish you the best of luck in decision-making, and sincerely thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
So, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here.
State your name, please.
My name is Rob, from We. We have played devil's advocate here as someone that doesn't have kids, and I also like numbers. We're looking for another 6.5%. This town has, I'm gonna do a comparison, I like comparisons. Suffield has 75% more school kids than we do. Their Board of Education budget proposal for this year was $40 million. So how does the town of East Granby need $20 million for a quarter of the students that Suffield has? 50% of Suffield's budget for a quarter of the students seems crazy.
There's a lot of variables that go into that, being a small school system like we have here, providing a comprehensive education for all the kids, costs more money per pupil. And that's one of the main reasons. We have to provide all our students the same thing that every other town has to do. And if there's only one student, again, we deal with state and federal laws. If a federal law says we're going to spend the money on them students, we have to do that. Where a bigger system, they have programs already set up for those type of things, so they can move students in and out. Our special ed budget fluctuates by over $100,000 from month to month. You could have kids coming in and leaving. The administrative team, they do that's their job, bringing their kids home, get a better education in their home school. It costs us less money to do it because of transportation costs. We're not paying for a specialty service when we could offer it in-house. And we're trying to do more of those things because they do help. Being small, though, you know, a lot of times you have to go out and pay for things that you don't offer on a day-to-day basis, and I'm sure Missy Valero, who's here every day of her full time, she pretended to be tag teaming me now and help answer the question even further.
Sure, and thank you for the question. I try and anticipate what questions might be. There's pros and cons for every school district, every town, large, small, urban, suburban. One of the challenges of a small school district is a higher per pupil expenditure. So I did do some research. I did not look at Suffield, I was comparing ourselves to other small towns, so I can't speak specifically to your comparison. But East Granby is lower than Lebanon, Derby, Westboro, Windsor Locks, East Windsor, East Hallow. And we're about $1,000 or $2,000 more than Bolton, Kilimri. So that is one of the consequences of a small school district is the per pupil expenditure. We are, like I said, I did some comparisons of other small districts, and we still are lower. We will be higher than larger districts.
I mean, do we, do we know the percentage of children in the other districts that are, is it comparable to us? Is there less or more?
Less or more what?
Kids in the other districts you compared to.
I compared small districts. We are one of the smallest in the state. We're right up there with Bolton, actually, I think Bolton is actually smaller than us now, Lebanon, Westboro, but we are one of the smallest K-12 comprehensive school districts in the state.
And she's actually using towns that are called in our DIRD, which are towns that are similar to us, but no one is just like us. So when you want to compare school systems somewhat like yours or communities, you look at what DIRD you're in. And we're in a different DIRD, and that's why some of those towns she's mentioning aren't vocal here. But when we look at that DIRD, we're pretty much right where we would be for what we expect to get, and our results are even better. I mean, our results are really, if you look historically of how East Granby's been doing, our schools are amazing. And I think that's one reason why a lot of people are here tonight. I think people want to keep it that way. We worked very diligently through COVID and through inflation, but unfortunately, even with all the federal money, there still was inflation that we've never made up for. When we look at the figure of an average of 2.58% increase over the last eight years, we should be proud of that number. I'm wondering now, maybe we're not proud of that number, maybe, and someone mentioned it earlier, maybe there should have been more money put in education each year, so we would be asking for less of it today. But we've worked very carefully, our numbers of 2.58% over eight years. If you look and compare it statewide, it's pretty much. We can't compare every district, you know, per pupil doesn't have that. There's a lot of variance.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, I went to school in Suffield. Suffield has an excellent school system as well. Suffield and East Granby are both top 20% Connecticut school systems. It's just, I have a hard time looking at the paper and saying, well, how does a town that has a population of 16,000 people only have a $40 million budget for their school system, and a town with just over 5,000 people needs half of that money? It just, it, something doesn't make sense in that to me. It's a lot of money to be putting into such a small school system.
It's a lot of money. You're absolutely correct. But I don't think it's out of line with what you see with the surrounding communities like us. And again, we've been very, very careful. And again, the Board has been in total agreement, our nine members. The one thing surprisingly, how well we've worked together. I mean, that's what really makes me proud of a town like East Granby is, the nine of us in the Board of Ed, we're agreeable, we understand, Superintendent explains to us, and we get it, and we get the tax impact as well. We all get that. This is what it costs us to do business. It's our best effort. We're not asking for, you know, just match everything from last year, we never did. You know, Superintendent said plus one, here's a number, but that was never where the Board of Ed was going to go with it, or the Superintendents. And we're in a place now where we believe that 5.48 has a detrimental impact on student achievement. It has an impact on our staffing, and it has an impact on everything we do. And that's why the 6.38 is something that we feel is something that we can make workable and be able to try to sustain what we have. It's true. We never used the words reductions before. Reduce this, reduce that, it was maintain, or try to do this or that. I mean, we're at a tough point right now, and we're, again, glad that at 9 o'clock tonight, there's a lot of people here, not just five of us, trying to make a decision. Because we all vote on this, and you have to vote on what's best for the community. And we have to look at our personal interests as well.
Yes, Paul. Paul Twain, Sunrise Terrace. I like number two, and there's a report, State of Connecticut report, the District Profile and Performance Report, that very clearly allows you to compare town to town cost of education. And I did some review of that. I looked at three different areas. I looked at the average for the state of Connecticut, the cost of educating a student. I looked at small towns, as Missy mentioned, and I also looked at neighboring towns. And in all three cases, East Granby is quite a bit higher for the cost of education. For example, in small towns, towns around 900 population or so, were 14.7% higher than the average of those other towns. When you look at the neighboring towns, Windsor Locks, Granby, Suffield, and Simsbury, were 10.4% higher. So if you take that 10.4% and multiply that times the number of students in town, that's about $1.9 million in excess cost that we're spending to educate our children. And that includes looking at the smaller towns as well. Gentlemen earlier mentioned that a third of the town, I didn't know the number was that high, were on fixed income social security. My raise this year was 3.2%. That was my cost of living increase. Double that from the Board of Education would be tough. That would be a tough pill to swallow. So I think really that the 5.48%, in my mind, oh, I know the other issue. Mr. Davis here mentioned earlier that we've been overspending for the past seven years, if I understand that correctly.
Including the next two that were projected to.
And the next two. Something's got to change. So great pictures of kids and so forth, and successes, and a lot of reductions, I appreciate that. But it seems to me that a business as usual, that wouldn't work. You know, I spent 42 years in the aerospace industry, and if I was in a situation where, you know, I was seven years in the hole, something would have to change. And it's, so perhaps reviewing some of these other smaller towns, then ravel And it's, so perhaps reviewing some of these other smaller towns, then able to educate their kids at 19,782 or 17,745 versus East Granby's 22,009. And again, these are one-year-old data, that is a year back. Perhaps reviewing how they're able to do it, you know, best practice, might allow us to get back in line, you know, with the cost basis for education of these other towns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim McPherson. You know, I agree, and I think that people did do us a disservice by not increasing taxes, right? Because it is a tax. It's a sticker shop. But, you know, business as usual, right, we're spending money. It isn't, but you can't take that at, like, the expense of our kids, right? You just, you can't do that, right? I think we do have to put more money into the system, so that way you can stop pulling from it. Eventually, we have to dig out of it, but that's where we need business in this town. Business that people want, right? You have to generate revenue. But until we get to that point, you have to fund it, you can't let the schools die. Like, my daughter's in track now, she can't even do a track meet at the high school. Why? Because the school doesn't have a track. I think I also read stories about missing, was it the, one of the elementary schools doesn't have staples? They haven't had staples in like six months or something like that. I don't know if it's true, I heard that. And I also heard they ran out of white lined paper, which, are you kidding me? Like, come on.
Yeah, I don't think that's accurate, but thank you for that.
Yeah, that's.
But we have to fund it. I mean, we can't, it isn't, so if you look at those schools and say, well, how good are they? Okay, we don't want to compare our school with a school at the bottom, you know? That's not what I want my kids, I want my kids at the top. And if it costs a little bit more money, I would rather pay more money to have a well-educated, you know? I'd love for my daughters to have a really good education, which I think they have. Moving here was one of the best decisions I've ever made. And I'll be happy to pay the increase if I get the benefit out of it. If I don't see the benefit, well, it's not worth it. But at some point, right, we need to put people in office that bring business and generate revenue for the town. And I think the town has to say that that's what we want. Like, there's just, it isn't sustainable, you can't keep pulling from it, because we can't sustain it forever. But I listened to the school board talk about putting their money into all these other programs, and in my line of work, I'm all about risk. And all I heard every time they talked about that was risk, risk, risk. And eventually, this is what happens. When you sit on that much risk, and all of a sudden you realize it, well, somebody's got to pay for it. So do our kids pay for it, or do we pay for it? And I would love my kids to get a solid education, have a very good school system to go to, go into college, which this school has done amazing wonders for my oldest daughter, who's now at UConn, trying to be an elementary education teacher, because she loves it so much, because of her experience here. And my middle daughter, who had learning disabilities, she couldn't read, like, brought into this school district, they have amazing parent professionals, and they have programs that try and get kids to, you know, to get better. And she has, she's, it's amazing at what they've done here. And that's a testament to the people that are running it. And if you got it, then that's not gonna happen. And we're gonna have a subpar school district. And again, who wants to live in East Granby, a small town with a subpar school district? I wouldn't, because that's not what brought me here. And I suspect that there's a ton of other people that would think it the same way.
So back to the data. Bolton, for example, they're able to educate for 19,782. And they have the district performance index, which I believe is kind of the measure of the quality of the education. And they're at 68.5 and we're at 70.8. So there's not a significant difference for a $2,200 difference in per child education, that school system has 734 kids. So it is possible.
I have no clue what is in Bolton, I'm sorry. I've been to, my youngest daughter plays hockey, and I've been to Bolton Ice Towers many times.
Just looking at the data. But so my point is, it is possible.
Just like East Granby, though, especially like East Granby, one or two kids can change those percents substantially.
They can do it. I think we can too.
Can I ask one small question about the budget and then a couple of others? Do we know how other towns rectify their budgets? Because I know where I came from in Massachusetts several years ago. The buildings were owned by the town, so tax liability for education, yet the schools were paying a rent to it, but any maintenance costs and stuff like that were incurred by the town, not the school or the Board of Ed. Does that work out in any other town to the area that could throw off our budget comparison to others? Or is everything apples to apples?
In Connecticut, pretty much apples, the school boards run the schools. Even though the schools are owned by the town, but the school boards run them separately in Connecticut.
Okay. Another question regarding our teacher contracts versus other schools. It's my understanding that a lot of our, that our teacher contracts are below the state average for what we pay teachers.
About the state average.
And a lot of them are town residents.
A lot of them are former students.
Yeah.
Town residents.
That's what keeps them here, is it's not, they're here because they like being in the town. I look around, I see a lot of teachers who are also residents here to voice their concerns. And so they don't just have a stake as an employee with their jobs at risk. They have a stake because they're actually taxpayers, and they're saying, I'm going to take my teacher salary, and we all know public servants don't make as much as the people in the corporate world. They're gonna take that risk and pay more taxes because they believe in what they are doing. So I just want to voice that concern, that any reductions to that, it's not impacting just our students, it's also impacting all of our other residents. Understanding that some residents might be impacted from fixed income perspectives as well. That's all stuff that needs to be balanced and considered when we talk about these budgets.
Yeah, and I can say about contracts, we aim to be in the middle. I mean, we don't aim to be the highest paid, certainly not aim to be the lowest as well. We strive to be in the middle. I will say one thing about teacher retention. Our staff do not leave East Granby. It is very, very rare to have a staff member leave for another district for a similar position. They retired from East Granby, or they moved on a district. But we have an extremely, extremely high teacher and staff retention. Our paraprofessionals, we had to work on our hourly wage, because we work extremely low. However, our teachers come to this district, and they stay in this district. Yes? Of course.
Good evening, my name's Tom Carroll. I've lived in town 39 years, it'll be 40 in July. I'm 77 years old. Gentleman talked about fixed income. I'll put in the disclaimer right away, because three years ago, I got to speak at one of these meetings, and it came back to me that someone said, well, he works in the school district, of course he's per school. Yeah, I am. And I am ambassador, and I apologize for being per school, okay? I'll also mention this. Fixed income, yeah, I worked 38 years before I came here, and I took a job here as a soap 17 years ago in the school district. I'm a soap, sometimes a pair. If they're kind enough to bring me back next year, I'd like to come back to here 18 months ago. But for those of you that think Dashar Ruby's on a fixed income, but you got it, now he's out there working another. I'll say it right here, and I'll get it back next year, because I've been here and worked for another. I make $22,000 a year as a subs slash pair, okay? On the daily rate that I get. I don't get medical, because I carried it over from a previous employer, okay? So I guess where I'm getting it, I have a son who's a teacher down in Maryland, he's got 25 years in now. He went seven years without raise, seven. He was at the exact same salary for seven years, because their budget down there, and they're on a county basis, not in town, okay? They couldn't afford any. What they did do, they said, and the teachers got together, well, I'll tell you what, we're gonna lay off a bunch of you unless you will agree to take X amount of furlough days a year, which they did down there, all right? Days without pay, my son included, all right? I'll try and be brief, all right? Be an Irish Catholic, but I mean, I do that. Let me say the following. When I came here 39 years ago, it was as a parent. And my youngest son went K through 12 here. First time I ever came in here on parent night, I left, and I said to my wife, I said, wow, that is astounding, what I just went through when he was in kindergarten, and then in first grade, and second grade, some of those teachers are still here, by the way. He's not 40 years old. My point is that I looked around, and I said, I would have given my IT to have gone to a school such as my son attended over here at All Road Run, and the luckiest retiree in the world getting to work over there. I have the best retirement job in the world. Why? Because these teachers, these teachers, all right? You heard Missy say, we have such a wonderful, wonderful retention rate. I have never in my life, I have been a teacher years ago, I've had teachers, okay? And I've worked up here for 17 years with these teachers. The dedication level here is tangible, you can touch it. They do not spend seven hours a day. As a gentleman tried to drive me a few years ago, one of these meetings, oh, it's a seven-hour day job. I said, well, come on in here in the morning, an hour or so before the kids get in, and be here an hour and a half after the kids leave, and then what would they take home at night? And someone said, what about the summers? And I said, what are the summers? They said, yeah, Connecticut, like every other state, you have to have your master's degree in a certain amount of time, and if you don't, you lose certification, you can't become, say, a teacher. They all work summer jobs, whether it's going to school to get their masters, or to work another job to help pay. Now, I understand, correction for law, a district ballpark, because I understand it's about $50,000 a year, say, a starting salary for a new teacher. I don't know what they pay in aerospace, sir. All of these teachers have at least a bachelor's degree, do they have their master's degree, or they're working on them? How many professions, after two or three or four years, if you have a master's degree, you only make in the neighborhood of $50,000 or $55,000 a year? I would dare say, if you go into the private sector and some of these other lines of work, it's gonna be a whole lot more than $50,000, $55,000 a year. And some of them are here for years and years and years, will never approach what they make in private sector. My son had a friend down in Maryland who was the assistant principal. Someone, and he was a computer guy, so someone recruited him, and he went out and doubled the salary. He left teaching. What a shame, because he was a heck of a teacher, my son said a heck of a principal. Let me just finish up with this. If you walk over to our gymnasium, excuse me, the auditorium, over the middle school, high school, there's all these banners around that the East Granby school system has been, has been in fact noted by US News and World Report and other well-respected national entities, for the quality of the schools that we have in this little town of 5,500 people. I dare say, I would challenge anybody to attempt to emulate what's going on here. We have something here that is special, it's out and out special. If you cannot place your dollars in education for our youth, I don't know where the hell else you would want to put it. What else could we spend our money on that is better than educating the youth in this country? I think my generation somehow boxed it. We did some things well, we did some, I'm a veteran, I got drafted in '68. You can argue the Vietnam War back and forth all you want, all I'm saying is, my generation had this chance. We got a climate on fire, they got an earthquake in the Pacific Ocean that fills the oven iron, and who said, fill the state of Texas? Well, for crying out loud, what we have now is a generation of kids who are unlucky enough to have these teachers, this group over here, and they're too nice. They won't get up and say anything, okay, they're all too humble. I worked with a young lady, I've never seen anything like it. Mary, you're amazing. Absolutely amazing. And she wants to stay. Actually, the ones that are, and I admit, we're gonna have to cut a few of them, but I'm here. Connecticut, two years ago, Harper Current did an article that said, the retention rate for a teacher now, people that are leaving is five years, and that's sad. We have teachers who want to stay here. They want to stay here forever and ever. And we have locked the market up here in the group, and some of you have been around longer than five or six years, I love y'all. Some of you have only been here five to 10 years. We don't want to lose these people. For crying out loud. I mean, we got the best of the best here. Why in the world would we not want to retain it? We do have something special going on in East Granby. The signs over there in the auditorium about everything that this school system is doing speak for itself. It didn't happen by accident, it happened because of your teachers, educating your children, my children. My son, when he graduated from here, my parents sent me to this Central Catholic High School down in Virginia. I could have walked from McLean, Virginia High School. My dad said, no, you're one of the Christian brothers who need this, listen, I want to do you good. I said, I just came for the nuns, they sent me to Christian Brothers, went to a Catholic college, and then got drafted, and had the drill sergeant. I was 25 years old before I moved, I was afraid to move. My son was lucky enough to come to this town, where I walked into his classroom, and I met all these teachers, and I thought, Lord, he, my dad sent me to a Catholic high school down there and paid tuition. And there were 35 kids in my class, right? And my parents, I missed guilt trip, but I got sent to Catholic school, all right? Well, he didn't, McLean High School was across the street. We have something special here, and folks, I will be quiet, I will sit down, but Lord, let us not lose it. Let's not lose what we have. It took years to get to this point, and we're at it. East Granby is acknowledged as one of the most astounding school districts in the state of Connecticut. US News and World Report says it's in the top 500 in the whole country for the United States. And it didn't happen by accident, that because of our administrators and our teachers. And I hope to heck we don't lose track of that and go back to something that was not here years ago. One last thing, I'm on a fixed income too. I admit, I make $22,000 a year supplement, okay? I say this, I'll say it publicly, if it'll save one of the students out, and they don't make, whatever. I'll come back next year for free. Let me work better than in that show. Mary's saying, I don't want you back. One last thing, though. If you want to be selfish people my age and talk about perhaps leaving the area, Parker Current did an article last year, they interviewed four random real estate agents. And they said to them, what's the deciding factor about someone buying your home and lives in your town? Four out of four independently, independently, without knowing the other state, said, oh, it's the school system. The deciding factor on buying a house in a town is how good are your schools? Well, folks, we got the best in the whole damn state. I think it's our job to keep them.
Just for the record, other towns are doing it for less.
Hi, everybody, I'm Jordan Amdom from 8 Mount Vernon Drive. Full disclosure, my wife is a town employee, she's a school secretary, I like to refer to her as secretary of the school. She makes a few cents more than she could make at Subway, so I'm gonna tell you what. Why are you doing this? But she goes in and smiles, and I've seen her at work, I was out at work with her over the summer, and I got to go and helped them out with some things. And to see not only my wife, but the staff, they're committed, they're working with very, they're willing to do it. Going back to the gentleman's point, who may have lied, about Suffield and comparing to Suffield. Now, I don't know the numbers, but I can tell you in 2015, we moved here because of our kids. I'm proud, proud parents. We wanted a small school system. You can't just buy it. If you said I could move my house and my family tomorrow to Suffield or Granby, all great towns, I wouldn't do it, I want a small school system. Tim Phelan knows my children by name for the good reasons, not bad. My children socialize with their teachers from prior years in the hallways, and actually visit their former teachers and classmates and tell them about great things. I love that. One thing, and I'm not very versed about this, so correct me if I'm wrong, but as I'm looking at the numbers, first of all, we need to know, we need to recognize the bread and butter of every town. There's a lot of services in town that I don't use, pay taxes for, I don't use, I have no desire to use them. And for some of you, that's the school system, because you don't have children, and I totally get it. But it is the bread and butter of the town, and it's a selling point of the town. And one of the things where I'm looking at the numbers up here with the budget, and I may be wrong, I believe if we go with the numbers that even Missy's presenting and reduce, in the next two years, it's gonna go up, because there's a couple of points we're missing. If this conversation were to happen three years ago, it'd be a totally different conversation. But a lot of our children are handling the ripple effect of the pandemic. They all went home for 18 months, and no disrespect to our staff, our school, or any of the other towns, but they didn't learn much. And in those formative years, a lot of the kids who should have been pulled aside about learning disabilities and identifying different ways to learn things were missed. And we're catching up now. And I'm a former child of learning disabilities, I've been through it all. I've been through it all. And I feel like when I saw the numbers, there's a lot of children in our town who need additional needs. And a lot of those big numbers were the children that exhausted what we can deliver. And now we have to pay to have others come in and help them. And a lot, a good chunk of that budget is for that. So if we reduce our teachers and reduce the people who are here, and they're definitely not doing it for the wealth, they don't see too many really nice cars in the driveways, they're doing it because they know they're enriching the students, and a lot of them are members of the community. I believe that if we haul back and take some of those resources away from them, over the next few years, we're gonna have more and more children who now exhausted our system, and we have to bring in additional resources at a higher cost to, to get meet their needs. So it's just kind of a different viewpoint, and I may be totally wrong, as I was absorbing all the numbers and all the data. My wife texts me and said, hey, we're going to a meeting tonight. Okay. So I didn't come with an agenda item. It wasn't a planned speech, but that's kind of what I'm seeing. If we back off, we actually may hurt our children even more and require even more services. And this conversation, a year or two years from now, is, hey, we need that much more money. So I'm of the belief that not only should we go with Missy's proposed number, but I think it should be a little higher, selfishly, but I think for the town, they need to get some. Thank you.
I think we have somewhere online.
Hi. My name is Joey Anderson. I'm an East Granby resident, and I'm also a public school teacher in here about that town. While I agree with a lot that's been said about how fabulous some of the teachers are we have in town, I'm actually not here to tell you how wonderful the schools are, and that, you know, we need to keep up the budget so that we can continue that. I've actually had some different conversations, and poor Tim Phelan's probably cringing hearing my voice. You know, we've had some disappointments with some things within the district. Our, as a district overall, we tend to struggle with neurodivergent students. We tend to struggle with our extremely gifted students. We tend to struggle to make students of color or other underrepresented groups feel welcome. A huge struggle we have in the schools is... Can you hear me? And as Drew was mentioning, we create bigger issues, and that line item of the alternate schools, the outplacements, will continue to increase. That line item will get larger, and it's not one that we can cut, because it's required by law. If we can't provide for the students within district, we're required to place them out of district at exorbitant rate.
Okay. Can you hear, can you hear me?
Not only the 5.48 increase, but I would support Missy's proposal for those increase.
Okay. Can you hear me?
I guess not. But her final comment was endorsing...
Her entire comment will be on GCTV, so everyone can hear it. They hope to listen to it later. We just lost hour for like 30 seconds, but.
Anyone else online? Okay, we have some, somebody back here? Steve? Could you please identify yourselves when you come up and where you live in town?
Oh, is it? Oh, I always thought it was.
Good grief, my name is Steve Mosher, at Sanku Drive in Scrappy. I grew up here in East Granby. I stayed here. I have kids here now. Bob was my science teacher. So I just want to comment that even with the economic climate, we need to kind of call it what it is, and 5.48% is really a defunding for our schools. I mean, we're talking about a significant reduction there. And really, our most precious commodity in the town, for me at least, is, you know, our kids. And I don't think we should, we should accept that a number that is so drastic and causes so much change for our school system. Right now, our schools really need the support, and I think we need to honor that. What makes the schools so great really are the teachers. And I know this has been said before, but they really are phenomenal. I work in auxiliary capacity at the schools, and so I, I know who we're talking about. And we're talking about, as was mentioned before, a real special group of people. So I just want to comment as well, that in the recent years, we had some especially, you know, prominent hires, some people that are new and, and it's just fantastic, you know, above and beyond, young people looking to make a big difference. And the budget cut, you know, approval of a low percentage here, we're gonna lose some of those people. And we're not gonna get them back. They're, they're gonna go elsewhere. And the confidence in the town is, is gonna be reduced, no matter what. People don't want to come and work at a place that they don't think they're gonna be retained, or, you know, they're worried that, that they're gonna lose their job. So I really want to, you know, just talk here as a, as a resident and someone who has young kids that are gonna be coming up through this great school district, as I did, and advocate for what I think is, you know, a more than modest approach with our superintendent recommending a 6.38. Over the years, you know, Missy has been fantastic with being in the middle, you know, she's not, she's not, you know, forcing our hand in either direction. We're not looking to, we're just right there in the middle. We're taking a modest approach, done well for the town, giving money back a lot of times. And right now is, is... I do think it's very possible we can look elsewhere in the town budget. It's our product. It's our finest product. And I don't think it's, it's terrible to ask for that 6.38. I think it's very appropriate. The, our school district provides what larger school districts do. You can't make it happen. And, but I, I hear that per people cost can come up, you know, time and time again, year after year. And the translation isn't there. It's, it's not a, for me, you know, it's, you cannot possibly compare, you know, everything that's considered. So yeah. Thank you. My kids are gonna be coming up through, through the school district. I want what I had when I went through here. I want what's right. And I think we need to take some action. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. It's 25 of 10. The Board of Finance did give me some messages. They'd like to have questions and alleviate the comments, so that, because they have a meeting after this. So, you know, I'm just passing on the word to me. So I guess I'll start first. If you have a comment, if you can give it to us in a question format somehow, we'll certainly hear you. I'd like to keep it short, so if anyone...
Next question. If we're going to up the class sizes based on the budget that's due, you know, Missy's budget is 5.4, 6.4, right. That's reducing staff, which is going to up our class sizes. How are we going to meet the needs that we are currently meeting right now in our students by having larger class sizes?
Right now, there's actually only one grade in All Grove School where the class size will reach out to our cusp. Our class size is one of the...
You're correct to a degree. Further reduction, that's a K5. So reductions that are 612, we will absorb teacher, so we will offer less sections and a little bit of a higher class size. The other impact is, to teach at a 7 through 12, it's very specific certification. So it's not even just, you know, science. It's a biology certification. It's a chemistry certification. It's social studies. So we are looking at, how can we reduce staff and have other professionals pick up additional classes? And what's going to be the result? We will, and I'm not gonna say lose, because I'm absolutely not a Debbie Downer. I, I will do everything I can to keep our system in the wits. But we will have to look at other ways, perhaps offer additional electives for our kids, because a good part of our teaching core will be in the, the course that they need for graduation essentially.
This maybe, I miss, maybe I miss phrase. What I guess I'm concerned with is the students missing out. Because the class heads will be too large. That's my...
I think one, one important note about East Granby is, we are boots-on-the-ground staff. We are teachers, we are paraprofessionals, and we are one of the administrative building. We do not have the ancillary staff that a lot of districts have. So when a child's in a classroom, part of the luxury, and I will use that word, of a smaller class size is being able to get to the needs of every single child. So with larger groups, and we are down in paraprofessionals, we have not been able to hire paraprofessionals, you know, to some degree, there is an impact. You know, again, our teachers are going to do their best job, as they always have. Nobody's gonna say, well, you know, you're, you're gonna cut that. I'm not gonna work with the children. That's not what's going to happen. But I, I think Ms. Anderson, before she was cut out, concerned was, it will have an impact on children that need the, kind of the most attention, the most needs.
And it might actually end up costing us more, because we have to place out of district. We have to tuition them out. It's penny wise and pound foolish.
Yeah, we're trying to keep kids in.
Right. And have them tuitioned here.
In the past few years, that's gonna benefit for us. Anyone else? Jim?
Hi, Bob. I promise I'll be brief. Nice, nice. Jim Franklin?
You've gotta go up there.
Okay.
Andrew. Promise I'll be brief.
It's okay.
Again, Jim Franklin, plenty of the lane.
Teacher salaries. So the last time I looked at it, two years, is our ability, average teacher salary in East Granby was $83,440. There were, of the 90, I think we had 90, 93, 94, full-time FTEs. We had 20 teachers making over $100,000. As far as the starting salary, the starting salary, last time I checked, which was probably a year ago, $53,000, doesn't sound like a lot of money. On a per diem basis, they work by contract 187 days. That is a 15 to 20% premium over a bachelor's degree being hired anywhere in state, in the state of Connecticut with a bachelor's degree. As far as a master's, master's degree on a per diem basis, working 187 days versus a person in the normal industry working 250 days is, we, we pay masters about 10 to 12% premium per diem for, for teacher salaries. So that's, that's a little highlight for you.
Thanks, Jim.
About 230 days.
My, my comment in the, Joanna Taznowski, North Main Street, my comment in formal question is, has the Board of Ed taken into consideration what future years are gonna look like and what increases might be needed? I have fourth graders at Seymour, excuse me, they're finishing their second year where they've been in school full-time, mask-free, all day, in person. Their second year, and they are in fourth grade. And like all districts, we're trying to make up ground that was lost during COVID. Our superintendent, our staff could not have done a more amazing job for keeping our kids healthy and for learning as best they can. But I have one child with learning disability and also deficit in facial recognition, so that was tricky with masks. And the amount of ground that he's currently caught up due to our staff is phenomenal. And it's kids like that that I'm concerned year after year. If we cut now and we're losing staff, what is that gonna look like? And if the Board of Finance has taken that into consideration for what Missy's budget looks like versus what the recommended budget looks like, and what that's gonna mean year on year in terms of future increases. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, your question about looking further down the line of Board of Ed, certainly looking at that aspect of it, that's part of the concern. If we let teachers go now, it's hiring quality teachers later, especially in a small district, when you need a physics teacher, maybe just for a 0.4, 4/10 of a job, not a full-time job, to get people that can do those things. We've got the people with our administration, with Missy, you know, do those things now. Our system's working. We have an outstanding school system. It's, it's working, and there's no one on the Board of Education that wants to break it. And there's no one on the Board of Education that wants to break us as well, because we are taxpayers. And that makes it a delicate balance. It makes it difficult. But we are looking at that, and we want the system to be able to maintain where we're at. And that's one of the reasons why we're opposed to going down to 5.4, it just sets us back too far. And I don't know if we'd ever make it up, just looking back historically, what we've done in town, going back a little since, uh, yesterday.
Can I just add one thing? Just one second. I know there are people that said to me, when are you gonna stop talking about COVID? The truth is, the matter is, we are not through that phase with our children with the learning, especially our youngest learners who in first and second grade are learning to read. Many districts took their ESAR funds, and over the last couple of years, paid for staff, and that's part of their operating budget. We are not including any of our ESAR. We only put two people in through ESAR funds intentionally, and we told them, when ESAR runs out, we don't wanna have a job here. So we do not have any additional staff to support that through ESAR. So our goal is to maintain our existing teachers and paraprofessionals to support our students, because we are not wearing masks, but the lasting effects of those couple of years for children is here 100%, not only academic, but socially and emotionally.
What else, sir?
It's more a question.
It does, they want questions.
Thank you. Yes. Hold it back, not, not say. Yeah. Mike Pescatelli, 16 Concord Drive. I have the, I would consider the fortunate opportunity to also be a principal in another town across the border of Mass. So I have this lens that I bring, and I just want to share that we moved here, my wife and I, with our son Benny, Miss Yale just left, but this school district really cares about kids. And they go above and beyond. There's examples of, you know, gains that were made. Vincent himself was behind in reading, and it was Miss Yale, Miss Seahaw, that ended up taking that on and got him to that next level. I could keep going and keep going with, with the teachers and the administrators. But I just want to say that comment. The question is, if we look at what, I think Superintendent, you said, what's the number or the cusp that, that, that cut point of like where, for kindergarten, I think you would combine, is that...
We're looking at grade two.
Okay, grade two. No matter what... No matter what it is at that level, I am fortunate enough, again, I'm going to say it one more time, fortunate enough to work as a principal in a pre-k to two school. My whole life has been in high school. So going down the littles has changed my perspective at another level. How important it is at that level, and I'm not suggesting in any way, Mr. Phelan, or anybody at the 7 through 12 level, to reduce those classes, that's not what I'm suggesting. But I am saying this, to reduce the amount of class sizes, even one, will drastically and very much impact the school and overall learning that will happen with those children. And no fault in a teacher, it's not going to be, I'm not suggesting that either, but I just want everyone to consider that. And I'm telling you that as a parent, but that outside perspective coming in as someone in the field, I can tell you day in, day out, the cost, that breakdown of what Superintendent with Jitsan and Chairman was just bringing up, that breakdown, we have to consider. And, you know, I hope everyone can consider that. I think 6.4 is reasonable. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, in the back.
Want to, Victor from 41 School House Landing. I just want to convey one thing. Today, there was a CD patch, article that published Connecticut's 100 Best High Schools. East Granby was ranked at 37. Southfield was ranked at 41, I believe. So you can understand, it's a data point that's collected at the state level, so you can understand the comparison of how the towns progress and the improvement that's being made. That's number one. One of the reasons I picked up East Granby, we were comparing with multiple towns, South Windsor, Avon, San Spurito. One of the best things that we found is that the teacher-to-store ratio. East Granby is the lowest when it comes to teacher-to-store ratio, and that has a huge impact on the gets as well. So one of the best investments that we can make is on the gets because eventually what's going to happen is if they can succeed well, you're going to end up paying more in college. And of course, as a parent, we try to shoulder their burden as much as possible, but it's going to be huge. This is going to be marginal is what I feel, and it's, if you compare it with the other inflation expected, of course, it is that point. So that's what I just want to highlight it over here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to make one point. If you actually go to U.S. News and World Report's direct website, it actually ranks us at 26 for 2024, not 37. I think that might have been last year's ranking, so we've moved up since then.
Where's Bolton on outlets?
I can take a look for you.
The other question?
Just one thing. The teachers don't work 187 days. They get paid for 187 days. They work more like 365 days. I can say that as an educator.
You're correct. That's their contract, and that's what they work, and they work well beyond that. Any other questions? Honest.
I have one last one, just so I understood. Your initial 6.38.
3.8.
Did that come with cuts?
Yes.
That was like the five, the five cuts, the...
Yes, 6.38 is five teachers and one non-certified staff member with cuts and other lines, but that's the staffing.
Yeah, okay.
And some we will absorb. We've had a couple of retirements that I was not aware of, so we will absorb those. It comes down to probably an additional three staff members.
But that's at 6.38.
3.8. When we came to Board Finance before, we were looking at 6.3, but because of the recent changes, we've been able to drop that number for somebody.
Thank you.
And dropping that number, I mean, we'll take recommendations. If something works and it's going to work for student achievement, we'd love to spend less money. I mean, we are open to ideas. Someone had said we should get a grant writer. We have a token grant writer. We get grants that we qualify for. If you're watching the news, cities get lots of big grants. We can't even apply for those, but those things are important. Any other questions? I know the Board of Finance, it's late for them this evening. Anyone else? Mr. Wells?
I'm proud of East Granby. Ask me why, Bob.
Why are you proud of East Granby, John?
Because last night, I sat through a presentation from a junior from East Granby High School who served as a U.S. Senate page in his first semester of his junior year in Washington, D.C., and that young man is going places. And he was 30 out of how many applicants?
He was one out of 5,000 in the state.
One out of 5,000 in the state. There are 30 Senate page individuals that go to the Senate Page High School or Academy, and this young man makes me proud to be from East Granby. Another thing that makes me proud about being from East Granby is our baseball team is now 8-0, and I encourage everybody to come out and watch our baseball.